Get a break.
Thank you all for being here again. This is the public participation portion of our budget and hearing process. We will ask that you line up, a couple of you line up by number, and you will announce your name and what capacity you're here. And you have two minutes to speak. Okay, so let's begin with numbers one through 10.
Number one.
Good evening Chair, Dr. Joseph and members of the board. I am Tracy McPherson, Executive Principal of Inglewood Elementary School. This is Justin Upinhouse, the Executive Principal at Witsit Elementary. And we are here tonight to share with you our request that the budget remain intact as proposed. We are here together because we are the only two schools who are simultaneously moving out of priority status and into magnet school status. I appreciate the opportunity to share the progress made in our priority status and the necessity for approving the 2018-2019 budget in order to sustain our work and continue moving forward. The school improvement grant awarded to Inglewood in 2015 provided funding for instructional resources, professional development, and additional personnel for reduced class size and social emotional support. The result has been increased teacher capacity, improved culture, and personalized instruction with significant return on investment. Over the past two and a half years, Inglewood's disciplinary referrals have diminished 50% and out-of-school suspensions reduced from 45 students at 158 days in year one to five students at 10 days in both 2017 and 2018. Text level assessments indicate students are reading at or above grade level have increased from 39% in 2015 to 77% at mid-year this year. The measure of academic progress demonstrates consistent student growth. The mid-year RIT scores equal the end-of-year 2017 scores. Additionally, we currently-
Your time is up, sorry.
Good, alright. So, you know, I understand that there's a finite amount of money in the budget, and I don't envy this decision at all. However, I do want to speak for our school and the progress it has made with the additional SIG funding. And so, although it's unfortunate to be named a priority school, I believe that Witsit needed the additional funding from the SIG grant. The grant allowed for us to use our knowledge, creativity, and advice from highly respected consultants to develop a system that improved instructional capacity. We also were able to increase time for collaborative planning that promotes critical thinking, evidence-based responses from students, and high-quality questioning going towards our students from our teachers. It also allowed for our students to, or our teachers to commit to building literacy and mathematics and creating mathematically-inclined readers. In addition, we maximized the federal SIG dollars by providing enrichment and equitable opportunities for our students to build confidence and self-esteem in the learning environment. Our Power Monday initiative created a setting where school collaborates with local churches and community partners to deliver engaging activities. The activities included Lego Robotics, visits from the Nashville Zoo, Small World Yoga, poetry and songwriting lessons, and many other activities that would have otherwise, our students would have missed if they relied only on local or Title I funding. And while students were engaged in Power Monday, the faculty was strengthening its academics, EL support, socio-economic support, and SEL supports by building and maintaining a positive culture and climate, combating chronic absenteeism, and providing students with basic provisions they need in order to be prepared to learn. Our SIG grant's coming to an end, and I'm fearful of what will happen if additional funding is discontinued. With or even no sustainability-
That's the end, thank you. Could you give us a moment so that we can fix the timer?
Sure, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. It's okay, thank you, we'll just- Use your cellphone, okay.
Hi there, my name is Jan Hattelberg, and I'm an MNPS parent who has a daughter at East Nashville Magnet High School. She is in 10th grade right now, and she is flourishing at the school. She is Belmont Scholar, National Merits Society member, and she was the only MNPS student to medal in cross-country this year. I'm concerned with, well, East being taken off the Title I program. It is, right now, 62% free and reduced lunch, and it stands to lose $240,000. With that money, we will lose the credit recovery program, after-school tutoring, and ICU, which is where students get, parents get notification if a student is missing a homework project or failing a grade. And with the school not achieving what it should be in their test scores, those programs are extraordinarily important to the students of the school. On top of it, they will lose other teachers, which will be negative. It could end up having the classes going up to 30 students. My daughter, with the PIDEA program, has learned to advocate for herself, and she wants to do, she's been doing science all the way through, and they lost physics this year. And she went with a number of other students to talk to the principal to see if they could reinstate it next year so that she could do physics and AP Biology her senior year. And I'm concerned that both the programs, the credit recovery and the higher-level classes, will be lost, which would be a tragedy. So, I hope you will reconsider taking some schools off of Title I. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Joseph and members of the board. I am Lakeisha Adair, the Restorative Practices Assistant at Jerry Baxter Middle Prep. My school is a restorative practices school. Moreover, we serve as a district and state model for restorative practices. Due to the consistency and fidelity of the use of the framework, discipline infractions have decreased from 43% to 24% within a two-year timeframe. In addition, a specific case study of the work is a student who transferred to our school after being placed into an alternative school for repeated infractions at another metro school. The student was immediately welcomed and assigned to me. The student has had only four infractions in comparison to the 22 she had when she entered our building. In addition, we have two tutors that work solely with students that need tier-three interventions. These tutors have made a great impact on tier-three kids this year. Our reading tutor, Ms. Childs, had 85% of her students to exceed their expected growth score on the MAP reading assessment. A clear example of Mrs. Childs' work is a young lady here now. On the student's last MAP assessment, she exceeded her reading goal and had a growth equivalent of two years. The work of our math tutor is the same, with 67% of the students served exceeding their growth goals. This is how the Title I funds are being spent at Jerry Baxter. Pulling from these funds, pulling these funds from the current formula for 2018-2019 will take structures and supports from the students at Jerry Baxter. We are requesting that you not make changes to the budget for the 2018-19 school-based budget formula as it was received by principals two weeks ago, which would sustain our present work, but allow research to guide your discussions for the next budget season. Thank you.
Good evening Committee members, my name is Teresa Wagner. I live in District 6, teach at Apollo Middle School, and serve as Vice President of MNEA. I come before you with three asks for this budget. First, a 5% pay increase for teachers. Nashville is one of the fastest-growing cities in the state, yet our average salary is not even in the top 10 schools. In order to be competitive with other school districts when it comes to recruiting and retaining the best possible teachers, we have to offer competitive salaries. We also, we also need to have a salary schedule that gives teachers a reasonable opportunity to live in the same community where they work. Two, raising exception pay to $45 an hour. In my school, this money is used to pay teachers for additional responsibilities such as after-school tutoring and after-school clubs. These activities support our students' growth, both academically and socially-emotionally. Raising this pay will make it easier for teachers who have to also consider things such as their own after-school childcare, to afford to stay and give a little more of themselves to our students. Thirdly, increasing professional development stipends. The administrator who brought this before the collaborative conferencing team made a very valid point. If the professional development by the district is truly high-quality, the stipend paid for that PD should reflect that. I believe that increasing this stipend will put greater accountability on the district to make sure that the PD offered is indeed high-quality, while also incentivizing teachers to sacrifice personal time in order to take advantage of the opportunities offered. I realize that this committee can only bring forth a budget proposal to the Metro Council and then work with what the Council approves. I would urge you to bring forth the most aggressive budget possible, because if you don't ask for it, they will not voluntarily offer it. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Ellen Montgomery, and I am a teacher at Hillsborough High School and also an active NOAA member. These beautiful kids you see behind me are five students I brought along with me who are on my core team. The core team, I'm also a teacher facilitator of, and it's a student-led restorative practice team. And something that we believe in as core team is student voice and listening to understand. And so, instead of me talking, I think it's important for their voice to be heard and for y'all to listen to them and hear what they have to say. But before I turn it over to them, I do want to thank you, Dr. Joseph, for stating that restorative practices is one of your priorities, and I just ask that all of y'all would follow through with funding it accordingly.
Hello, my name is Tiana. I'm a part of the freshman academy at Hillsborough High School. And when I got put into CORE, because it's, the teachers see you as a leader, and they put you in it because they want good students and students that can represent the school well. So, when I got put in the CORE, I was like, okay, what is this? I don't want to do this. I was like, why would they put me in this? And then, along the way, I started to become more of a leader and see, oh, wait, my peers actually want me to help them, they want to hear what I have to say. I can listen and help their issues. CORE has been guiding me along the way, and lately I've been starting to realize all the progress. My grades have gone up, I have more friends, I'm open to what any teachers have to say. I've been working with teachers and students, and the main thing with CORE to me is that I'm helping my peers, and my peers feel safe talking to me. Because as a student, you can't always feel safe talking to teachers. You can't go up to a teacher, "Hey, I think you're stupid." But you can go up to a student, "Hey, can you talk to my teacher? I think they're stupid." And then, we can have a conversation with your teacher with you there and make it better for you. Because when I first got to high school, I'm thinking, oh, this is about to be High School Musical, we're about to turn up. And then, and then I get there, and the teachers are like, no, you got to pipe down. I'm like, okay, I got you. So, throughout the way, CORE has really showed me that I can be a responsible student, be balanced, and I do a lot of school activities. So, it's helped my grades come up, I've been able to help my peers, and I've understood how teachers feel and how students feel, because I did not know teachers act just like us. So, so I can compare two personalities into one, and I can be the middle person of any situation at this point. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Prince Mugabo. I'm part of the IB Academy at Hillsborough High School, and I'm a junior. She pretty much said everything about CORE, but Nelson Mandela once said that, he once said that, "I never lose, I either win or learn." And I believe that's something that CORE have achieved as a group, both of it not just one. Because looking at this from a student's perspective, it's really hard to go to a teacher and tell them how you feel or the reason why you're acting the way you are. But speaking to other students, you can easily, like, react with them and tell them everything how you feel because they, they go through the same things. So, speaking with teachers and students at the same time really helps, and I feel like this can, and I feel like a better way to promote this CORE is not only at Hillsborough, but at all of the MNPS schools in general. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Linda Bowling, and I'm a leader on the Hillsborough CORE team. CORE stands for Culture of Restorative Environment, and basically what we do is we try to bridge the gap between teachers and students, and we try to make the students feel heard, but also the teachers feel heard as well. We do circles and interventions with students and with teachers, and I just can speak from a personal experience doing a circle with a student that, when we were asking him, you know, "Why are you tardy? Why are you late? Why do you just skip class and stuff?" And he was just like, you know, honestly didn't know anyone cared. And I just think that having somebody there for you, and you know, to be able to open up and know that people are watching you and people do hold you accountable for everything is very beneficial. So, yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Deja, and I'm also a leader at, in CORE. I'm a senior at Hillsborough High School. And CORE is something that I believe in, and I, when I heard about the group, it was something that I honestly wanted to be in because it really makes a difference. I don't feel like kicking kids out of school, like automatic suspension and thing, really helps them because they still come back angry when they come back, or they're still the same person. I feel like talking and understanding why the student is doing what they're doing, and helping them through it, and also helping the teacher understand, and because sometimes, you know, teachers don't know what's going on in every student life, it's too many of us. And so, you know, I just really believe in this. I don't know. But it's, it's something that's really making a difference, like she said, like students come to us and tell us, like, they're doing better in class, and we have less arguments with teachers and students, and these circles and classrooms, we do full classrooms with one teacher, and the teacher feels like they have a voice because students don't always listen, but she sat there and talked to her students, and her students were understanding, like she feels disrespected. And so, I just hope you put more funding into this because I would like to see where this goes, even though I'm not going to be in the school anymore, I still want to see where this goes, and I hope it grows into something amazing. So, thank you so much.
Hello, my name is William Murphy. I believe CORE represents, oh no, I believe restorative practices isn't a waste of time. It is a revolutionary idea, which has the potential to change the way schools operate and renew the way school, the overall culture of the schools that use it. In the simplest sense, it matters. Rather than speaking of the existence of CORE, which other schools are currently doing, I believe we should be focusing on funding it. The way, the fact of the matter is simple. There needs to be a mature student group which facilitates student-and-teacher relationships, because currently, as other students said, students just aren't comfortable speaking with other teachers, I mean, with speaking with teachers. Currently, there is a widespread and longstanding policy within our nation that expulsion and suspension fix behavior, and that just doesn't, like, that's not something that works. And CORE's focus is on reducing that amount, like, the focus of restorative practices is reducing the amount of suspensions and expulsions and finding positive ways we can change that. So, rather than expelling a kid, we can communicate with them, understand why they're doing it, what's causing this, and fix the problem at the root so that they don't come back and just get expelled again, or get into another fight, or get suspended again. And that's what we need, that's the point of restorative practices. Not only that, restorative practices, like, including CORE members, it increases our social awareness, our awareness of politics. We understand more things because we discuss them and how it affects us. The walkout that's coming, CORE students are involved in this. We speak to each other, and we facilitate this at Hillsborough, and it's become something that our whole school is involved in. And I believe CORE and restorative practices as a whole is very important to that.
I don't think they heard you, Tyce, the mic wasn't on.
Eleven through twenty.
If you're somewhere between 11 and 20, come to-
There you go, thank you.
Fourteen, I guess I'll go. Hi, my name is Lynn Hoyt, MNPS parent, former PTO president, Meg's Magnet. I want to thank you all for your service, and I know every member of this board wants to listen and is concerned about our budget situation. I feel like I'm speaking to the choir, actually, but I feel like I just want to put my voice in the room to talk about what I think we need. And to please look at our classroom needs first before anything else. What do students need? What don't they have now? What do teachers need to be successful? What do principals need to serve the students in their buildings? My high school junior does not have a full-time physics teacher. I have teachers telling me they make fonts smaller on handouts so they can print one page instead of two. Students without economic advantages still attend schools below the Title I threshold of 75%. Please, please focus on what matters for all students. What matters to me is academic quality, teacher quality, and social-emotional health supports. Make sure we keep funding high-quality academic programs, pay teachers a professional wage. We must strengthen the relationships between teachers, students, families, and communities through community achieves, restorative discipline, family engagement, and social-emotional supports to shape great school climate. Our city must maintain our investment in public education. In the end, if we do not fund our schools and offer a high-quality system of families moving into the Nashville area, they will go elsewhere. MNPS should be seen as, just as valuable an asset to the city as the predators, worthy of investment. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Alexandria Sparks, and I'm a member of NOAA. I am a community organizer, and we are all here this evening representing NOAA, Nashville Organized for Action and Hope. NOAA is a faith-based coalition that is multiracial and comprised of 59 member groups consisting of congregations, community organizations, and labor unions that work to give voice to those who traditionally have no voice. Today in Nashville, many of us feel we have no voice in shaping the future of our city. Among other things, NOAA wants a future where we stop funneling young black men into jails and prisons. This is why NOAA exists, to build the power to make the change. We are all members of NOAA's Criminal Justice and Mass Incarceration Task Force, School Discipline Reform, and Subcommittee. Our goal is to eliminate racial injustice within the justice system, specifically the mass incarceration of black men, leading to a system that is more compassionate and accountable for all. So, why do we need change? Black students account for a full 75% of suspensions and expulsions when they are only about 40% of Metro Nashville Public Schools enrollment. Suspended and expelled students are twice as likely to drop out of school because of this, and because of that, that triples their chances of contact with the juvenile justice system. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board and our director. I'm the Reverend Troy Merritt Jr. I am the Presiding Elder of the Nashville District of the African Methodist Episcopal Church, and I am a 45-year resident of what is now a School District 7, and a former employee of this system. Incarceration in the juvenile justice system will increase the likelihood of a young black man going to prison from a 1 in 10 chance to a 1 in 3 chance. 68 out of 100 male dropouts will go to prison by age 40. Bottom line, suspensions plus juvenile justice interaction leads to dropouts and prison. This, ladies and gentlemen, is referred to as the school-to-prison pipeline. It costs an average of $12,500 a year to educate a child, whereas Tennessee spends just under $9,000 annually. To incarcerate a child, the average cost is $112,500. NOAA is working at the highest levels within this school system as well as the mayor's office to initiate change to improve the racial disparities in school discipline within MNPS. We meet quarterly, and we're thankful for that, with Dr. Joseph, as well as meetings with Dr. Cito Narcis and Dr. Tony Majors, as needed, to design and follow up on this school's, boy's, system's commitment to expand less punitive models across MNPS. Thank you. We just ask you to support us in stopping the school-to-prison pipeline.
Good evening, my name is Jimmy Hanley, and I am here today representing the School Reform Subcommittee of NOAA. NOAA is committed to ending racial disparities in discipline in Nashville Public Schools. NOAA School Discipline Reform Committee, led by Eric Hoof, has been working diligently for the past three years implementing less punitive discipline models across Metro Nashville Public Schools. Currently, there are four restorative practice trainers positions in Metro Nashville Public Schools. I am sure you will agree, four trainers is not enough to make a systematic change in the radical disparities in Metro Nashville Public Schools on suspension and expulsion. NOAA is committed to ending racial disparities in school discipline within Metro Nashville. Our recent actions include, in October 2017, at NOAA public meeting, there were 1,800 people in attendance in front of Metro Nashville Public Schools, agreed to partner with NOAA in planning and implementation of social-emotional learning and positive discipline programs. In November, NOAA held four public meetings, one in each quadrant of school system. The purpose of the meeting was to share data around racial disparities in school discipline within our school district. 300 people signed up to help NOAA work with you, the school board, and Metro Council to provide the necessary funding in the school budget to implement positive discipline models across Metro Nashville. We also held a January press conference to announce our push for additional funding for restorative practice and other positive discipline programs. Video of this event is available, and the Great Tennessee Tribune article was published as well. We are now contacting you, the school board and Metro Council, in supporting of this funding with follow-up meetings in all four squadrons. Data proved at NOAA, and NOAA supports the fact that these positive discipline models have proven to be effective. There are school, there are several metro schools which have. I am a United States Army soldier, and one thing my leaders never did was send me on a mission unprepared. Please don't send our children unprepared into society.
Good evening, I'm Phyllis Sells. I represent NOAA and the School Discipline Committee. I'm a retired school social worker, being in metro for 30 years. And as we all know, that there are many children who come into our schools with challenging behaviors for many reasons. We all hear- We all hear about adverse childhood experiences, sexual abuse, hunger, neglect, violence. All of these things the kids bring into our schools. And we, as schools, have to deal with this, our staff and all of our paraprofessionals. We have to know how to deal with these children, or they end up being expelled and suspended because we're not dealing with them in a positive way. So, we are very supportive of Dr. Joseph's initiative to, for every school to put in a positive program for discipline, whether it's social-emotional learning, or restorative practices, or positive behavior. And we know that if schools or staff are trained, and there are the resources necessary, we can make a big impact on the lives of children, keeping them in school, keeping them learning, and not out in the streets. So we are asking the school board that to include and to support enough money in the 2018-2019 budget for trainers, training, and resources to make a big difference in the life of our children through positive behavior programs. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Duwana Wade, and I also am representing NOAA, as well as Salama Urban Ministries and Cairo's Community AME Church. Why social-emotional learning? Why restorative practices? Social-emotional learning provides a foundation for safe and positive learning and enhances students' ability to succeed in school, careers, and life. Research shows that SEL not only improves achievement by an average of eleven percentile points, but it also increases pro-social behaviors such as kindness, sharing, and empathy. It improves student attitudes towards school and reduces depression and stress among students. Effective social and emotional learning programming involves coordinated classrooms, school-wide, family, and community practices that help students develop self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making. School is one of the primary places where students learn social and emotional skills. Students are more successful in school and daily life when they can manage and know themselves, when they can understand the perspectives of others and relate effectively with them, and they have more positive social behaviors and relationships with peers and adults as a result. There are reduced conduct problems and risk-taking behaviors, and there are improved test scores, grades, and attendance. In the long run, greater social and emotional competence can increase the likelihood of high school graduation, readiness for post-secondary education, career success, positive family work and relation, positive family and work relationships, better mental health, reduce criminal behavior, and engage citizenship. Likewise, restorative practices are another important tool in our MMPS arsenal. Research shows it's effective to provide clear expectations for behavior, teach skills needed to succeed in the school environment, and respond to problems with strategies to strengthen connections and relationships, rather than push students out. Schools seeking to create a positive school community and respond in an effective way when problems do arise are increasingly turning to restorative practices. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Joseph. My name is Liza Ramage. I live at fourteen hundred Rosa L. Parks Boulevard, and I'm representing, excuse me, NOAA. So what is next with NOAA and social-emotional learning and restorative practices? The School Discipline Reform Subcommittee is in charge of the next steps. This Subcommittee is planning four public meetings in April, one in each quadrant of the school district. Again, we will inform parents and community members of the disparities, the racial disparities in discipline in MMPS, and about the benefits of social-emotional learning and restorative practices. The primary focus of these meetings, though, will be to shed light on the budget process and enable parents and community members to become part of the process by contacting the City Council and the mayor's office on behalf of social-emotional learning and restorative practices in the budget. Our request is that Dr. Joseph's SEL budget be fully approved by you and sent to the council. NOAA will then work to assure that the council approves this budget. NOAA's November public meetings gather around three hundred interested people across the city. So these next four public meetings may gather similar numbers. In addition, information is going out to the congregations and membership of NOAA's fifty-nine member churches and organizations. Following the public meetings, NOAA's focus will be on communicating with the City Council, as well as having a presence at the City Council meetings. Regardless of what happens there, NOAA will urge support of full SEL funding for the 2018-2019 school year for the benefit of our entire community. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Byron Harvey, here with you once again. Just a little bit about me. I am an associate minister at First Baptist Church, South Inglewood. Also have a nonprofit called Youth for a Peaceful Community. But I'm here on behalf of NOAA, Nashville Organized for Action and Hope. In addition to what has already been presented, we think that because of the good work that Dr. Joseph, this board, principals, faculty, Student Services, and many others, MMPS has made great strides in working with school discipline. Now we are ready for tremendous decrease in the racial disparities. We see that the numbers have gone down, but we're still looking at racial disparities. And that's what restorative practices and social-emotional learning does. It's justice. It's fair for all. This is by no means a way of saying, "No, we don't discipline kids." But what we're trying to do, we're looking at disparities, and we're ready for that to stop. The work is hard. The school board is doing the best they can. The Department of Student Services, principals, and teachers are working hard in this area. However, they need help. We don't want to see our kids grow up and head to prison. We want them to have great success. We need more money and trainers for restorative practices and social-emotional learning while they are young. We want this so bad that we will be at the Metro Council Budget Meeting. I hope that we can stand together, us and the board, and everybody else in this room, together. Because together, we can be champions in this fight against the school-to-prison pipeline. As a minister, I have had the opportunity to visit jails, and prison, and juvenile justice. But I don't want to continue to do that. I just want to visit the kids while they're in school. Thank you.
I'm Eric. I'm Dr. Eric Huth. I'm the Chair of the Subcommittee, the Student Discipline Subcommittee of NOAA's Criminal Justice Task Force. Has too many words. NOAA wants to disrupt the school-to-prison pipeline, and we are serious about solving the racial disparities in school discipline. While the problem is not unique to Nashville, it does impact us greatly. We believe that every single school board member bears some of the responsibility for fixing this problem. That's why we intend to make it an issue in the upcoming election. I want you to ponder the following questions and think about how you would respond. Do you believe all children, regardless of zip code, race, or ethnicity, deserve a chance to be successful and productive citizens? Do you believe that our children of color deserve a student discipline system that treats them with dignity and respect? Do you agree our black and brown students are no worse than their white counterparts? Do you believe there are systems in place that funnel students of color into the criminal justice system? Do you believe a well-implemented social-emotional learning program can counter the effects of structural racism and implicit bias? If you answered yes to these questions, then you know something needs to be done. Please vote to include enough funding to bring our social, to bring social justice to the broken student discipline system in metropolitan Nashville Public Schools. Our community is watching. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I kind of got... Twenty-one through thirty, please.
Good evening. I'm Sonia Stewart. I'm the Executive Principal of Pearl Cone High School. And good evening to Dr. Joseph and the school board. I'm here tonight to voice my support for the changes that we've made to the district Title I allocations. Pearl Cone has become a national model in urban education. I have the opportunity and blessing to tell our turnaround stories in cities all over this country. With our commitment to the necessity of both academic press and personalization, we have built systems and structures to respond to the variety of needs that our students bring to school in order to remove their barriers to learning. Rooted in high expectations for all, we have amassed an excellent staff who are committed to doing the hard work necessary for our students to succeed. For the past five years, Pearl Cone has made significant gains in student growth and learning, boasting a 1.1 gain in ACT scores while the state is declining, increased graduation rates, increased college acceptance rates, and boasted a decline in student disciplinary infractions, out-of-school suspensions, and expulsions. Turnaround work is extraordinarily difficult, and sustaining turnaround schools is even more challenging. We are currently in our last year of SIG funding and tasked with the weight to stretch our budget to meet the additional needs of our students. The increase in the Title I budget not only allows for fewer cuts to be made in our already decreasing staff, but makes long-term sustainability a viable option. Our Title I funds provide additional English and reading teachers to address the literacy needs of a student population who all came to high school reading below grade level. More, funding allows us to maintain additional personalization staff, including additional counselors, social-emotional specialists, and principals of special populations, all of whom work to support students' differentiated needs in order to ensure more time for learning. Budgets tell us where our priorities are. As a district, I am proud and thankful for the decision of our Director of Schools that he has made to intentionally prioritize our students with the greatest need. When resources are scarce, we must look at resources not just as dollars, but as, but other ways, sorry. Our school is slated to receive additional funding. Other schools have resources that support their success, including diverse student populations.
Time is up. Thank you.
Rachel and F-, okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Joseph and members of the board. My name is Catherine Pratt. My children have attended our neighborhood schools in the McGavitt Cluster for the past seven years. I've also been a teacher in the Hunter's Lane Cluster for the past four. I come to you today with deep concern over the shift in Title I allocations. While my son's school stands to gain eighty-six thousand dollars, my daughter's school will lose a hundred and seventy-five. Three hundred and fifty of my other kids, the ones that I teach every day, will lose their after-school tutoring program, an interventionist staff member, their community outreach events, the after-school dance team, professional development opportunities for our teachers, and countless other valuable instructional resources. I'm curious if a sliding scale for Title I allocations has been considered. Would the district be willing to supplement schools with a community achieves coordinator in the absence of a Title I coordinator? I'm also curious as to how these percentages are calculated. High transancy rates. Our school is at thirty-nine percent. Language barriers, fear or inability to report wages. All of these factors could affect the accuracy of this percentage. While I too believe in equity over equality, many schools with high numbers of vulnerable students are being knocked down the rungs of the ladder that they are desperately trying to climb by this proposed change. We are certainly not looking over that wall yet, but we are making gains every day. Please help us to keep moving forward and reconsider this portion of the proposed budget. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Joseph, board. My name is Nate James. I'm an exceptional education teacher, ninth year, currently in the Hunter's Lane Cluster. I didn't know I was speaking until pretty much I got in the room. So I don't have a lot of data, but I'm going to be speaking from my heart about paraprofessionals. I know you have tough decisions to make, but please, please don't touch the paras. Not only for the obvious reasons of implementing IEPs. Most schools have large caseloads that exceptional ed teachers by themselves cannot meet the needs of those IEPs. We do not want to be in a place where we're jeopardizing the district by violating federal law. But also, the schedule, the flexibility that they create for teachers to have duty-free lunch, the things that we've decided as a district we want to do. But also, the paraprofessionals, more than maybe even our teachers, connect with these students. They're one-on-ones. They build relationships with these students. They're the ones that feed students. They're the ones who sit with them at lunch. The paraprofessionals, they have a pay schedule that's outdated. They need to be paid more. They have to have second, third jobs just to spend time, and can't spend time with their families on weekends. And they're putting in many times similar hours to teachers. We need our paras, and I please, I plead with you to not touch our paraprofessionals. Thank you.
To the school board and Dr. Joseph, I ask that you bear with me. I have a health issue tonight, and hopefully you'll be able to hear me and assist me while we assist our children in this school-to-prison pipeline. I'm not here tonight to talk about the usual issues in regard to that, but to tell you that I have personal experiences with that, that I think that you need to hear about. I have, I am a mother, a grandmother, and a great-grandmother. And I have had children that has had to come through the school system and try to deal with issues that exist there that has been more than what they can bear. I have heard them talk about how, you know, I'm treated at school as if I'm not even human. But I am human also, and I think that I should be heard too, but no one wants to listen to me. And I think that's really sad. I had one grandchild who was arrested. And the way it turned out is that he was arrested for something that he hadn't done. And the end results of that is that the court told him, "Well, I'm going to let you go because a mistake has been made." So they apologized to him and said, "Well, you know, things like this happen." But little did they know what was happening to him back at the school. Because when he went back to school, number one, they told him that he shouldn't come back that particular day. It said, "Come back tomorrow." And I said, "Well, he's not doing anything today, so why can't he come back today?" And they said, "Well, just let him come back tomorrow." And so when he came back the next day, he was told that he couldn't come back to school at all, that he was being put out of the school system. And when he was asked, "Well, why?", the school called me and told me to explain to your grandson.
I'm so sorry, but we have, we don't have that much time.
Please help us. Please support restorative practices.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is John Galloway. I am a father of three boys who attend three different MMPS schools, from tenth grade to third grade. This is my youngest, Chandler. I'm very concerned with the proposed budget cuts to our cluster for next year. We serve a variety of students, including immigrants and low-income students with many needs. We are a zoned option school for North Nashville. And these kids are like, at this Hillwood Cluster, they're like our own children. My wife and I often provide rides for our son's North Nashville friends after games or school events, and we even open our home for overnights when they aren't able to get back to their own home. I understand the concept of channeling funds to the lower-performing schools to help boost them. I'm fine with that if the data shows it can be successful. But I do worry that in robbing Peter to pay Paul, the schools you're taking from are going to start declining as well. So I urge you to examine this plan and make sure that you're providing adequate services and meeting the needs of all your MMPS students. So please chose transparency in your plan so that parents will know and understand the future of their own students. Or, this projected decline of losing Metro students is going to continue.
I'm Beverly Wayland Schmeller, and I live in Nashville and work for Metro. Dr. Joseph, esteemed Board, community, we, the people in this room, work in and for education. Tonight, let's remember the words of W.E.B. Du Bois. "Education and work are the levers to uplift the people." So how do we uplift the people? Administrators guide, teachers teach, and students study. We all learn when there is trust. Trust is essential in education. Parents trust us to keep their children safe and to prepare them for adulthood. Teachers trust that all students will learn when they are safe, supported, and challenged. And students learn when they trust teachers. Teachers earn respect. When they respect students, set great expectations and keep their promises. How can Dr. Joseph and the Board support Nashville educators in our calling to uplift the people of Nashville? Be like great teachers. Show us respect, set great expectations, and keep promises. The memorandum of understanding has been in development for years. Now it has stalled because money is tight. But now is an opportunity to uplift our district. We have momentum in test scores, hiring, and graduation. Keep the momentum with the memorandum. Please approve the MOU with a 5% pay raise. Give teachers the raise they deserve for trusting students and trusting you. As a recovering English teacher, I'm gonna leave you with one more quote from Eleanor Roosevelt. What you don't do can be a destructive force. Thank you.
I'm Chris Moth, a parent of three kids in Hillsborough Cluster schools. Our IT city is growing fast and our tax base is increasing. Because of that, your budget cuts were quite a shock. I didn't believe it until Percy Priest Principal Williams posted 123,000 in cuts on our homepage. Then last week, you gave us a school-by-school final allocation. It said that Percy Priest would get a $160,000 increase, not a cut. That $300,000 disconnect in your numbers is a much bigger problem than the cuts themselves. Every parent here tonight understands our shared challenges. Reductions from the legislature, a hostile federal government, a city council balancing exploding population growth, debt, and transit. Everyone wishes Nashville kids got the $16,000 that Dr. Joseph enjoyed when he was in Maryland. Tennessee's website claims your budget to be about 12.5 per child. But somehow, your allocation translates that 12,000 down to just over 5,000 of discretionary spending for children at Percy Priest. And I'm not so upset that kids at Buena Vista may get twice what mine get at Percy Priest. I'm not here for that. Rather, I'm here to challenge you to be accurate and transparent with your spending plan. We will try to help you patch this budget in the political arena, but we cannot help you unless you tell us exactly... you have to tell us exactly what the budget is. Explain how 12.5 at the top turns into 5,000 per kid on the ground. Detail how our poorest schools are gonna be different next year. Share your plan for a 70% poverty school. Importantly, tell us exactly what dollars you need from our council to make our budget whole again. This is not an integrated Math 3 problem. We need simple addition, top to bottom, left to right. Please do not pass an error-filled budget in a 5 to 4 us-versus-them vote. If you do that, our council and our legislature are gonna laugh at us parents when we ask them to fund the gap. Let's show Mayor Bryley that we can be bold and transparent, like his grandfather was when he unified us over 60 years ago. Boldness starts when you bring Nashville a final budget spreadsheet that squares up your numbers. Please deliver that spreadsheet to us by Friday. Thank you.
We should have 31 through 41.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Sheehan, I'm an Aiken lottery dad. My wife and I chose Aiken because it was the most diverse and caring educational community that we had ever seen, and we had seen a lot of them. We chose based on the 4th graders who gave us a tour of the library, and after hearing the Hillsborough High School students who spoke earlier and said more than I could on the details of their experience, that we're choosing Hillsborough tonight. I'm a watchdog, I'm a PTO volunteer, and I want to talk to you about the Nashville way. That Nashville is a city with vision, and this budget is a budget bereft of it. I want to pay attention to the way that we do things in Nashville. When we have a vision, we start by deciding what we need. And you've heard a lot of things about what we want to accomplish. I leave that to you, and I am going to depend on you to do that and hold you accountable for doing that. But once we realize what it is that we need, we figure out what it takes to get there, and we figure out where it's coming from. We don't start with what we have and shove it around to try to make things work. And I want that vision from this school board and from the administration. The money will not be coming from DC, it will not be coming from the State House, but I want to get a number from you that says what it will take from the Metro Council to fund our schools the way they need to, to achieve that vision that deals with paraprofessionals, that deals with social-emotional learning, that deals with restorative justice, that deals with the things that the people on the ground know about. So I want that vision from this group, I want to see it in the budget. I want you to tell us what we need, I want you to ask the Metro Council for it, and I want you to give us a chance to go and get it together. Because this budget is an embarrassment, and I am proud of this city.
Good evening, my name is Janice Turner. I've been an MMPS parent for 18 years. My youngest daughters are sophomores at Hillsborough High School. I am also the co-chair of the Hillsborough Cluster PAC. You've been given a copy of the summary of parent concerns and requests regarding the MMPS budget. This document was created in a joint effort by a number of parents in the Hillsborough Cluster to address several issues we have with the proposed budget for the next year and the current spending freeze on this year's budget. We are here to partner with you to ensure that all schools in MMPS are successful. However, to stand with you, we need three things. First, we ask to see a complete and accurate budget for the next year for MMPS, not summaries and allocations. We want it to be editable and verifiable spreadsheet form and available to the public by this Friday at 5:00 PM, March 16th. Second, we want to see an evidence-based, tested, and proven plan for how MMPS will improve the low-performing schools. This document should clearly outline MMPS's strategies and action steps. And thirdly, we ask that in regards to the spending freeze on the current budget, that you look elsewhere to make up the $7.5 million loss of funds from the states for this year. We ask that you do not make the schools, whose budgets have already been approved for this school year, take the time and energy to resubmit, request funds, and to fulfill their mission for education for this year. Not only is this a waste of time, energy, and labor, it is demeaning and demoralizing for teachers and administrators to have to ask for already-approved money for copy paper, calculator batteries, after-school tutoring, credit recovering, field trips, and more. Therefore, we ask you to look elsewhere to make up that loss of funds in a good-faith effort to demonstrate that you have the teachers' and students' best interests at heart. Our requests are sincere. We only ask what is reasonable to make a good decision about proposed change. We're doing our best to look at what is good for all of MMPS and understand that there may be changes that may need to be made for the good of all schools. We are willing to support such change with transparency and accuracy for the good of all and the students. Thank you. I have additional copies.
Good evening, I'm Jayden Serrato, a Charlotte Park resident and a Hillwood High School sophomore. In the last week, we have learned about the budget cuts to Hillwood High that are greater than $600,000. And looking at the list of projected cuts, the first thing on the list is security position. This is very concerning to students like me. This year alone, we have had several issues at school. The most recent was an actual fire at the school soon after the Florida shooting. Students were scared to go out of the classrooms, and many ran outside and started ducking behind cars. We weren't sure if it was an actual fire or a possible shooting. In the world we live in, the last thing a principal should feel pushed to cut is security. We also could lose six full-time and four part-time teachers, as well as special and parapros. This will greatly affect our school, the kids zoned for Hillwood, as well as my North Nashville friends who choose to come to Hillwood. Please don't pass a budget that will cause harm to any of our schools. I think it's time to reevaluate. We need our school board updated... I'm sorry. We need our school board to make sure Metro kids are given textbooks, technology for our schools, updated sports safety equipment, and an increase in our security, not a decrease. A budget should be used to invest in all MMPS children. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Laureen Greathouse from Mount View Elementary School in Antioch. I'm here to express my extreme concern over the reallocation of Title I funds in our district. According to the allocation spreadsheet, Mount View is one of the schools least affected by the budget decrease, about 4% of our budget. However, the effects are great. As a member of the leadership team at Mount View, we have worked diligently over the past several years to use our resources in ways that will have the greatest impact on student learning. We have recognized that our greatest asset and resource has been the intentional use of people to support our students. Yesterday, our school leadership team met to decide what to give up. Do we eliminate our interventionists that provide daily support for our needy students? Do we eliminate our numeracy coach that has worked with teachers to improve our core instruction in math? Do we eliminate our parent engagement person who, this very evening, is meeting with our chronically-absent families about the importance of bringing their children to school regularly? If that is not enough, because we are no longer a Title I school, then we will not have opportunities previously used, such as book'em books to give to students during the year, loan forgiveness for teachers, bus subsidies for field trips to extend learning, or many opportunities for grants. All of these decisions have left me wondering, and I ask that the Budget Committee and School Board consider these same questions. Why are the 58% poverty children at Mount View Elementary less deserving of Title I funding than the schools with 75% poverty? Knowing our highest-needs students already have access to more money, more resources, more consultants, more teachers, what evidence or research would suggest that giving those schools even more will impact student learning? The perception in the district, and I say perception, is that Central Office is spared from having to make the same cuts. Will Central Office be under the same scrutiny about spending and return our investment to our school? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Missonia Busby. I'm a Metro teacher at Mount View as well, and also an MMPS parent. What is equitable? It means to be fair and impartial. When reading the Metro social media post, one of the headlines about next year's budget, there is a headline with a graphic and a caption at the bottom stating that next year's budget will benefit all schools and all students. With the new Title I guidelines being implemented next year, not all schools and students are benefiting. Our school is losing over $230,000 in funding. We are not frivolous in our spending, and our MTS-S data shows that our triangle is finally becoming less and less upside down. Our students are not benefiting from the upcoming budget. How does one choose what stays and what goes? It is an impossible decision that ultimately affects every student, teacher, and staff member within our building. What makes our students so much less deserving of those funds than those receiving the extra funds? We have seen hundreds of thousands of dollars spent in scripted IFL units, outside consultants such as the Journeys textbook training earlier this year, travel expenditures at Central Office, and yet, we are being asked to cut what is directly benefiting our students and our teachers. We have been patient this year with many difficult changes. You have asked our schools to purchase their own required anchor texts that the district could not pay for. We have not been able to see our scope and sequence for the entire year, and here we are with one more burden. One more burden that teachers and principals are being asked to bear. I only hope our school isn't asked to purchase more required text or materials next year because we don't have the money. Where will those funds come from, and how will those new initiatives be implemented? Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Pettis. I'm currently a Harpeth Valley parent, and previously worked for Metro Schools for 10 years, as well as serving as a Title I coordinator. I fully support the MMPS mission statement, which states, "We deliver a great public education to every student, every day." I have significant concerns about the current proposed budget. If you want to do bold things, then let's create a bold budget and ask the Metro Council to fund it. In order for this to happen, it is imperative that MMPS be transparent. We all know that research shows that throwing money at a problem does not solve it. So what is your plan for our underperforming schools, and how are you gonna measure that success? A concern I have is that the budget published on Metro's website does not accurately depict what this budget does to many schools. For example, on the website, it looks as if Harpeth Valley is in the sunshine, we're getting $10,000. But the reality is, we're losing four positions that are imperative in our school for our kids' learning. I want all kids in our school and others to be successful. But how successful is the current proposed budget for all schools? Every school has achievement gaps that the school personnel worked tirelessly to close. Some schools are losing classroom teachers, interventionists, and paraprofessionals that are important for ensuring the success of all students. There are many schools that have a high level of students that are at the proficient level, but that doesn't show the whole picture, because every school has achievement gaps. Taking away these funds from these schools will only widen that gap. Parents in Nashville have options for where to send their kids, probably more than many other cities. They can go to charter schools, there are many, many private schools. They can attend Metro schools, and in addition, we have lots of surrounding counties that parents can move to. Decreasing the funding and the support for our local public schools may lead to parents believing that leaving Metro is a better option. This will cause decreased enrollment and further budgetary issues. So let's create a bold budget together. If you want to be the fastest-improving urban school system in America, then let us create a bold budget that works for all students. And let's start by having full transparency of the actual realized budget by the end of the week.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't know if that's an omen. My name is Shelley Baldwin, I've got two kids, a west end middle. Dr. Joseph, I received both your messages you left for me today. I did not return your call because I am not the one you should be calling. You should be calling all parents to explain why the district can't find $8,000 to pay for water filters to ensure the water is safe for kids to drink. You have at least four administrators making $185,000 plus a car insurance and 25 days of vacation. That's $712 a day. If those folks gave up three each of their vacation days, you'd have 8,500 bucks to pay for those filters. Just think what we could pay for if you drove yourself in a car that got good gas mileage instead of having somebody else drive you around in a Tahoe. I'd also like to ask you to explain why principals are having to fill out special requests to buy copy paper or get parents to donate it, and why you and the board chair took a trip to Seattle days after you put a freeze on expenses including software, field trips, and travel. It'd be great if you could explain to all the students living in poverty that attend schools with less than 75% free introduced lunch that they will not be getting the resources that they need and deserve. You were quoted at a board meeting saying this, "Thinking strategically about how we utilize resources because we don't have a dollar to waste." My take on that quote is talk is cheap and the pun was intended. The people speaking up tonight know that under the leadership of Dr. Register and Chris Henson, the district was commended for having a streamlined and efficient Central Office, allowing more BEP dollars to go directly to schools and students, unlike what is happening now. We know our schools and our students desperately need every dollar they can get. We also know it is well past time to hold you accountable for the position that you have gotten us in where maintenance is trying to bypass water filters, putting kids' safety at risk in order to save $8,000. We are looking to the board that we elected to do just that. The kids are counting on you.
Hi, I'm Laura Dietrich, a proud parent of an Aiken Eagle. This has been the best five years of our lives, and we adore our school community, and it makes me sad to think of leaving. I taught in Title I schools for 15 years in Metro, but now teaching in another public school district, also Title I. My daughter's a 4th grader at Aiken. She used to love learning, but sadly, she now... She used to love learning, but sadly, she now tells me almost daily that learning hasn't been fun since first grade. It breaks my heart to say this is our last year in public schools. For many reasons, I don't have time to list. If you had told me even five years ago that we would be leaving, I wouldn't have believed it. I'm a product of Metro Schools. We will continue to support and fight for public school teachers, kids, and families for as long as it takes. This is not my last board meeting. Children are barely given 15 minutes of recess daily. Have the board members read the mountains of research to support a more balanced school day with plenty of time to play? We must educate the whole child, not test them to the point where they don't want to come to school. The private school, the private school our daughter will attend next year is just as diverse and loving as Aiken. However, she will not have high-stakes stressful testing that gives her stomach aches and makes her want to throw up. And she will not, and she will play for at least an hour a day. More importantly, she'll love learning again. This school also has a tiny, tiny budget, but they are purposeful about educating the whole child every minute of the day. Testing, too much. Not only is it developmentally inappropriate, I've seen it for myself, and detrimental to children, but it costs millions of dollars annually. Get rid, stand up to the powers that be, help get rid of this harmful testing, and we won't have a budget problem. Another solution would be, as the last person mentioned, to cut positions at Central Office, or cut their salaries. Not our kids' teachers and school staff, who love our kids and do whatever it takes to help them every day. It is your moral and ethical responsibility to take care of our children. They are looking to us to take the best possible care of them. They must be our top priority. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Proctor. I have three students at Gower Elementary, and I have, my oldest son is a 5th grader at HG Hill. I'm here to talk about lack of transparency in the school budgeting process. I've watched this year as Gower struggled through a $100,000 shortfall. I watched the parents rally around to try and help them out, raising extra funds. My wife is even a Metro substitute teacher, and she works with every grade level, and she's also an active PTO board member. And she sees the need for the very people that will be cut in almost $600,000 of Gower's budget. The problem is that the numbers given to the public do not add up. I'm going to give you one example because of limits of time, but Glencliff High School is losing 157 students and gaining $36,000 in funds. Gower is just over 100 students being lost, and we are losing almost $600,000. There is no explanation, there's no transparency, and to a simple parent like myself, it doesn't make sense. There needs to be a clearly-defined explanation for this budgeting process and how budget cuts and increases are being distributed. No one in this room knows how our Central Office budget and spending works, or how it is being affected by this brand-new budget. Enrollment may be down, however, Nashville population is not. We are growing by almost 100 taxpayers a day. There is zero reason, from my perspective, why we should be losing $7.5 million from the school budget. Something needs to be explained. Before this budget is passed, everyone needs to consider each and every aspect of why schools like ours are losing such a vast amount of funds. You say that you're trying to create a more equitable environment. I take you at face value, and I trust your heart has good intentions. But what you have done in the process is cripple many that have done nothing wrong in the name of fairness. The its city needs to fund its schools. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Randy Brown, and I have two children attending Nashville Public Schools. I'm here to speak about the proposed allocation of funding for the FY19 budget. I'm calling this an allocation of funding because we don't have an actual budget. Having worked in corporate finance for over 25 years, it's clear to me that a full budget likely exists, but to this point, NMPS has not released that document or those numbers. Right now, we have no understanding of the priorities of NMPS. What we have is an allocation document that picks winners and losers, based not on any quantifiable justification, but on a change to methodology of Title I funding, and an unclear, and to this point, unsupported forecast for FY19 enrollment. So here we are, trying to understand a fundamental change in the way that our school system is funded, without any previous communication, or data, or supporting documentation. The reality is that we, as taxpayers, and more importantly, as parents, deserve to see the full budget immediately. Are we funding schools or administrative overhead? At this point, we just don't know. I'm asking that we be provided a full budget by the end of this week. Parents cannot advocate for NMPS without full transparency. Finally, I'm struggling to understand the notion of equality as it relates to Title I funding. If you're a child below the poverty level attending any of the schools that are going to lose funding under this plan, are we now saying you simply don't matter? The federal government set aside money to help even the playing field for you, but because you live on the wrong side of a districting line, you're forgotten? The federal government thought you mattered and provided funds to help you and your school, but Nashville decided you don't need those funds. Now, you're somehow better off and somehow have better opportunity because only 60% or 65% of the students at your school are living in poverty. That makes no sense to me, and I fail to see any equity in that at all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maria McCormick. As a supporter of your leadership key values and goals for the next school year, there remains a need to keep Title I programs such as credit recovery funded, to support high school students who are at risk of graduating on time and/or dropping out of school. The benefits of this program is that it provides a personalized blended approach to learning in a highly-engaging instructional environment that is self-paced and facilitated by certified instructors who provide objective, individualized support. Due to each student's different learning preference, they have the opportunity to receive extra practice in a subject, as well as frequent assessments to monitor and report on their progress. As a parent of a graduate of Hillsborough High School last year, my daughter was the captain of the halftimeers dance team, performed in the production of 12 Angry Women, as well as worked after school. Due to these outside activities and commitments, credit recovery became the learning platform that she needed to graduate. She is now a human performance and sports science major at Tennessee State University. As an equal partner in the education of my children, I understand my role in supporting their success and academic achievement. Currently, I'm working in collaboration with my son, who is taking a credit recovery course right now. This is an email reply that I received from the credit recovery teacher on March 9th, after requesting an update on his progress. Yesterday, we were so proud of Daniel that we told him so. He came in on day one and really buckled down to work, taking notes, turning off his phone, and focused on finishing. He's done so well, we are planning to try him on the cumulative exam next week to complete the credit. If he passes, he's done. Thanks. I ask that you keep the Title I funding the same for these programs, and find alternative ways to fund low-performing schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Joseph, would you like to say something? That's the last person we have tonight.
Well, first, I want to thank you all for coming out and giving your voice to the issues. I love democracy, because it's the only way we move forward, is when everyone can come together, everybody can share their voice, and everybody can help rally and support the work that we must do in MMPS. You know, I think that all nine board members passionately care about our children and our children's success. And I know from my side, I can speak for myself here, you know, with two children in Metro Nashville Public Schools, who go to the neighborhood school that we live in, I see day in, day out, the inequities, and they're not in one of our neediest schools within the district, but it's a school that clearly has needs. So I see, get, and understand that. You know, what's great about this process, a couple things I just wanted to just address globally. I think first, I have been working with Mr. Henson and my chiefs and team to go through every budget in the district weekly. I mean, we've been spending hours like prying through budgets, so that's why the process is longer than usual, because we're really spending time going through every single budget, line by line. And that just takes time, if you're trying to get things right for 86,000 children. So I will not have a budget prepared by Friday, so I'll put that out to you now. It won't be ready, because we've been working extremely hard building it, and we've been listening and working with the board, as well as, we wanted the opportunity to hear from you, as we identify the priorities that we are finalizing. But on March 28th, we will have the official budget that will be shared. On the 27th, we have a hearing, and of course, at that day, it'll be done. If not, we're in more trouble than you think. But it'll be done by the 27th. I will be able to come out and share some of the specifics, but the 28th will be the actual specifics. And we'll get it out to you as clear as it has been historically. I think our goal is, again, how do we make sure that we get all children what they need? That is, from the bottom of our heart, our focus on the work that's happening, is we manage a multitude of priorities and a multitude of needs. Can we take one step better? Can we take one step forward? And the great work that we need to do is what we'll continue to look at. And I'm convinced, just like last year, as we proposed our first budget and had to bring it down to what was allocated to us, we feel that budget gave us one step forward. It is my hope, with your input and your voice, that we'll take another step forward. So I look forward to continuing to listen and collaborate with you. We do have a number of additional meetings scheduled. Again, the purpose is to gather input and feedback, and I thank you all for taking time out of your busy schedules. You're here because you care, not just about your kid, not just about your school, but about the district. And I do greatly appreciate that, and I'm sure the board does, though I don't want to speak for them. But what I will say is that, you know, we have a couple of additional meetings and hearings to continue the process. Once the budget is proposed on the 28th, there'll be opportunities for you to actually see what I am proposing to the board, and then the board has an opportunity to continue to get feedback from you, and to continue to fine-tune, if they, you know, my recommendations. Then that budget will be voted on on April 10th. And then from April 10th, we will have an opportunity to take that budget through the process, first going to the mayor, then going to the council, and then finally being ratified. So this, we are very early in the process, in terms of, there's still opportunities to do things, and, you know, we appreciate the feedback. Stay involved, don't let this be the first meeting you come to, keep coming back, because things evolve. Not only from the time the board approves the budget, but then, once it goes to the mayor, and the mayor gives us the allocation, there's still opportunity to talk, because that budget will have to be revised, as was the case last year. And then we'll take that budget to the council, and then the council will give feedback, and then it'll be revised once again. So the more you're involved, and the more you're engaged, the more informed you can be, and I think things will become clearer over time. But again, I truly, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate your advocacy. I appreciate the time that you have taken to be here, and together, our goal is to make this not only the fastest-improving urban district in America, but one of the best districts in America. And I think we can do that together over time, but it's going to take time. So, thank you, and I am done. I will turn it back over to our budget chair.
This concludes our meeting. Thank you. So let me give you guys that date again. The date for our next public participation budget and process, budget hearing is March 27th. At 4:00 PM.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.